On the folks at Saturday, I mentioned one of my granddaughter's softball games. Well, you talk about a freezing day, but today, A D C sun's out. So that's a wonderful thing. At this moment, we'll call the meeting to order of the Monday, April twenty eighth work session. These were from the school corporation board. And we would all rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, and our government, the individual, with the reputation just for all. Thank you. At this time on the agenda is item one C, which is public input on agenda items. And as usual, I think most of you know that it's an opportunity for individuals in the community to speak. We're limited to three minutes. And certainly, we're not going to take any derogatory remarks or direct disrespect toward any board member or staff or teacher or student. And just please be aware that personnel matters will not be addressed also during this meeting. This is a work session, so we won't be voting on any particular items that are on the agenda for this evening. And Mr. Scott, Honored Scott, you're the first one to sign in.
Oh, all right. Well.
You want to come up and talk with us here or stand up?
No.
Pretty able speaker back.
I will pass at this point. I'm just here to listen.
Okay. Well, appreciate you. I know you've been around to a number of meetings here and appreciate all that you do for the community and your family. So we have Jared Gilbranson.
All right. So I'm here to talk about the proposed policy forty four twenty, which has to do with police relations. I'll save the fire and brimstone. And you just really talk about it from, I think, perhaps an unattended consequence you had. I did reach out to your attorney. I don't know if she was able to form my concerns onto you. As written, right now, you're giving building administration permission to have children interrogated by the police. Now, in your wording, it's not if they're suspected of a crime. However, courts have ruled that that child in no way feels like they can remain silent. You are violating their Fifth Amendment rights. Also, only parents or legal guardians can withdraw that right to remain silent. That's my Fourteenth Amendment right. So in loco parentis does not cover that. That's for health and safety. This has to do with very clear civil rights. You cannot do that. So, in other words, would we allow a building principal to take children to a mosque to pray? No. Would we allow a building principal to take a student for an abortion? No. Because those are rights bestowed upon the parents to make those decisions, not a building principal. The right to remain silent is the same kind of rights. You cannot do that. I don't think you're meant to do that. I think you're meant to comply and be helpful and all that. And it does seem helpful that if they just want information and they don't suspect them of a crime, let them talk. But you can't do that. Absolutely can't do that. And by the way, anything they say completely inadmissible. They were coerced. The minor didn't have the correct protection. So it's actually counterproductive. So I think just by omitting that little section of the policy, I think by simply changing the wording to parents must get permission, I think you only made the whole problem. I don't think you guys want to wade into these waters. It's not worth it. I don't think there's any public good being done there. And I think it's probably a good idea for the principals and everyone else to know that we have SROs in school. They are law enforcement. Their job is to arrest people for crimes. So when they're speaking to someone, they are looking for evidence of crime, even if they don't suspect that person of a crime. You're also opening up students to retaliation. Oh, yeah, I saw Billy doing that. Now Billy and his buddies are going to come after that student. Me, I as a parent, have the right to say, don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbranson. Next item, we have it's item two A, discussion item of Uber Tech renewal. So in front of the board, and then we asked Mr. Turner and Mrs. Bynum, they're going to talk a little bit about our renewal with Uber Tech for the upcoming school years. In the past, when we initially contracted with Uber Tech, we had lost our technology director. And we had created our instructional technology coordinator to kind of remove that, knowing that she doesn't necessarily have the networking and tech skills. However, the utilization of using technology in the classroom was a particular strength. And in doing so, her salary was different than previous tech directors. But we knew that we needed additional support to try to get our district in the place that it needed to be. Shortly thereafter, Mr. Langen had resigned, creating a greater need in the world of technology. Our initial goal was to have Uber Tech come in for a year, help support, help supplement, and then move into getting a new network person. We did some interviews and the only qualified candidates that we could find were looking for about a hundred thousand dollars, which is significantly more than what we were pacing or paying additional for our previous people. The, in having conversation over the years, we have drastically increased the number of network devices, access points. And so as we were doing the evaluation, Mr. De Sweet and I, we had multiple conversations, talked to Uber Tech. In order to appropriately support the current network, it is recommended that we have two additional people as opposed to just hiring one. And so in doing something, and I'm just giving the thirty thousand, they're going to talk much more in that. But just going for numbers, there is a proposal in front of the board that if we were to secure a three-year contract, because my recommendation will be to continue as opposed to the initial part was just to be a temporary fix. With the cost analysis, it will actually save the district money and we will get better support. Because instead of having one or two individuals, we would have access to multiple people with different skill sets that can be more targeted in the area that we need. So the current proposal that you will be seeing is if we do an extended three-year contract, it's fourteen thousand one hundred dollars a month, which is less than what we are currently paying. And if you divide that up and take it by twelve and then divide it by two, it gives you a ballpark about eighty-four thousand dollars as what we would have to pay for two people. But that includes their benefits and salaries, which would give us salary right around sixty thousand dollars. Because benefits just for the health insurance is about twenty-four. Then we'd have to pay the turf on or perp on top of that plus bike and other. So in the long run, it's actually cheaper for us to maintain and continue with those services. Now, to talk a little bit more about the services that they provide and the value that we received in the two years, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Turner and Mrs. Bynum, who are much more versed in that than I am.
Still some of my thunder, but that's okay. We can hit the beginning part if it's okay, as you can see. He hit this first slide pretty well. The only other thing that we, when we did, we did do one interview, we also had unqualified candidates apply, right? So we have people that really oversold their skills. And once we got them in here, we realized they really weren't network engineers or network admin in any way. And we have a lot of technology to support. So what we found is that it's really a struggle to find network engineers or level-two technicians that can do that work. Right, there is a high demand and a low supply. And therefore, as Dr. Case said, they can, they can ask for a very high wage, right? And some of them, even if they aren't really skilled or only skilled in one area or one particular thing, and we have a lot of different network components. I reached out to Brad Hag, who's the director of technology at the I D O E. Every year, the I D O E sends out a survey to all the districts. It's voluntary to fill it out. You have to fill it out in order to get funding, so most do. And ask if he would share the non-forward-facing data with me. Because not, some of it's published on our dashboards for districts and some of it's not. And these two questions are not. It's whether districts are outsourcing technology services and what services. Out of the four hundred and four districts that responded to that survey in twenty twenty-four, fifty-two, sorry, fifty-two point five percent are outsourcing some aspect of their network technology. And twelve more districts than the two hundred and twelve are considering. I am not allowed to say which specific districts, but I can tell you some of the districts considering are in Moore County. What are they outsourcing? Well, they're outsourcing mainly network services, engineering, and cybersecurity. And districts can answer multiple things for this. It's like a checkbox, so they can answer multiple things for this. I will also tell you that it was very interesting that some of the districts that say, yes, I'm outsourcing, and yes, I'm outsourcing network and infrastructure, already have a network engineer in-house. So one of the districts in our area has ten I T employees, two are network, one specifically is titled Network and Systems Engineer. And yet, they say, yes, I'm outsourcing technology. And what am I outsourcing? I'm outsourcing network and infrastructure. So I found that very interesting, that even those schools that are able to afford and find a network engineer are still not doing all of those network engineering things in-house themselves. I'm going to talk for a couple of slides about the benefits that we've seen these two years, having this managed service contract. And then Ryan's going to talk about our partnership a little bit more. But the big thing is that we've been able to keep systems that are critical to our network up and running and up to date and functional. They also are making sure our backups are maintained and then testing those backups. So before, we weren't necessarily ensuring that. Now we're ensuring that, we're ensuring all things are up to date and we're ensuring they're functional. There are a lot of things that use our network in the district to function that people don't know, like our H V A C system. And so that's a really critical piece. The next thing, and Dr. Case kind of hit on it, is that we don't just have the expertise of one person. We have the expertise of a team, right? And so we might have one network engineer working on a server account and another network engineer working on a problem that's networked at Washington. And those problems can be solved simultaneously without like losing time on our end, right? We have a variety of skills that we can tap into. And then the third one is training. Part of our contract is that we can train my I T team. And we have used that in any, every way that we can, right? So just with the deployment that we did with the laptops, we had some training for our hardware tag. And he was able to set them up himself, even on the network side of the device. The next thing is that it's a complete care package. So we're not limited to how many times that they can come on site. Not saying that we're using them to avoid work ourselves, but we're not getting, you know, extra fees or something from the amount of times they come on site. I'm the only one that can put in tickets, and that is to eliminate extraneous ticketing. Because that, that number of ticketing goes to our, our costs, right? So our cost has gone down both years, and that's because my I T team has taken on, myself, my I T team has taken on more of those network responsibilities. We have priority over non-contracted clients that Uber Tech has. So if we have an emergency or we have a need that's, you know, time-specific, we take priority over those individuals. The physical proximity is also a really big benefit because they're so close to all three schools, right? If we have an emergency, we can normally get someone on site very, very quickly. They're right by target, if you don't know. And then Uber Tech has an established vendor relationships. And they added on there, it's about finding the best price, not securing, because it's my job to secure them. But I am checking to make sure we do have that best price. And so even though, you know, I went out and I found three quotes and I have, you know, the best quote possible, I'm checking in to make sure that that's really the best quote for our district. Just last year, thinking of the projectors, I had a very good quote from C D W. And checking with Ryan, just to ensure that we can't even get, you know, fifty dollars off of each of these projectors because overall, and that cost to our district is significantly lower. And then if we do choose to do projects with Uber Tech, we get a discount on labor, which I do not get from other vendors. I do not get a discount on labor if we have, you know, people coming in to do projects. But if we do have a Google check, we have a labor discount. So I'm going to hand it over to Ryan on these next two slides.
Sure. You'll make them up there?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Ryan.
Hi, Ryan.
So as has been discussed, our agreement is a, the best way I like to describe these type of agreements is partnership agreement. What it does is it fills in the skill gaps within a particular organization. So we look at it and say, great, you have these fifteen aspects of your network and you have these skill sets. We have, we have a helpless person, we have a hardware technician, we have these pieces, and then we can mold that agreement around it. So that's, that's where this kind of came from. So from your guys' side, the primary things that we focus on, can't get too in-depth in regards to heavy specifics, considering it's a public-facing meeting and we don't want to talk anything security-related. About seventy percent of what we do for you guys is partly in that envelope of security-related, whether it's network access permissions, how we manage keeping things up to date, as mentioned, data backups, connectivity, remote connectivity, security analysis, system review, consulting. And then, of course, training was already touched on. So it does cover the onsite or offsite. So if we need to remote in and do things, there's no difference in regards to what you guys pay. So it allows us to work both alongside Angela, her team, as well as underneath her because obviously she's the internal employee making those decisions, saying, hey, education-wise, we want to be, we want to allow our teachers to have what they need to be the best teachers they can be. So we aren't teachers. We don't have teacher backgrounds. We're technology people. So it allows her to guide those decisions and us to execute the more complex nature that you may not have the skill set to do with. So that's really what this slide kind of covers. Network services, training, onsite, onsite leadership. We've had guys come out and help like with the recent acquisition of new hardware technician come out. Hey, let's, let's spend a day here training him. Okay, let's get him up to speed on this and that, so that he can handle those duties and do them in a meaningful way that's going to be conducive to proper management work forward, rather than having someone flounder with the details of how. Because a lot of what's done, I mean, we're talking about a network with over four thousand access devices and well over three hundred, three hundred and fifty network devices plus interfaces. So there's a lot of nuance. And those are the portions, the networking portion, that's what we're, of course, dealing with day-to-day. But the nuances of how to integrate and how to touch each of those pieces so that it goes in well, it works right the first time, it's visible, manageable, maintainable, all of those pieces are kind of what we help make sure that the, everything stays lubricated and moving along as a training.
Now, I can stop in for a second. The, the other thing that's really important to me is that when they do train, that we are documenting all that. So if we have turnover, that we can then teach the next employee, right? So, you know, last year, there were two hardware technicians that just got different, better paid jobs, right? And the one we have now is fabulous and wonderful. We're training him up, but I have to be prepared as the leader of the department that if he decides to take a different role, that we can then take that training and pass it on to the next person. So I require all of that stuff to be documented by my team in a, in a place that I have access to that we can then transition to another employee if we need to. We also cross-train to make sure that we are all trained in the different things. So that if one of us is gone or one of us is ill, right, we can, we can pick that up.
Angela mentioned it before. I mean, these are some vendors that some of the law, their local schools manage in some form or fashion. Actually, honestly, most of them are even less local. Most of them have a principal or a teacher whose technology integrated that we answer to. So you guys have a larger team in place than these organizations do. But we manage and assist in multiple industries. Helpful as well as that is probably something that many people forget about is schools also maintain student management systems, which house HIPAA data, P C I data, all kinds of things about parents and students. So security is paramount, even though it's just a school, people like to say. Schools now have to have vaccination records and all kinds of stuff that's within those systems. So keeping all of those things where they should be with access rights and permissions is only the people that you can't even see the pieces are the ones that are allowed to and should be having access to those. So we touch doctors and all that stuff. So we see HIPAA, we see P C I, we see those compliance standards, so we're allowed to. So it allows us to apply those skill sets to what we're doing here as well. But if you guys have any references, of course, if you guys have worked with us for a couple of years now, but if you have any references, we actively manage about a hundred accounts or so.
And then last one's me. So we obviously looked at other managed service providers. So we've looked at four major ones, and they all kind of end up in the same three problem issues. Number one, they cost significantly more than our current agreements, significantly more. They do not support all of our critical network systems. So Five Star was one of those that sounded great price-wise, but then when they had a list of what they wouldn't touch that was pages and pages long, things they wouldn't do. And then they would charge us every time they're on-site. So all of those individual companies said that there was an hourly rate if they touched the ground in our campuses in any way. So their initial, their monthly cost was more, and they would charge us if they had to come on-site. And I will tell you, our network is incredibly locked down. That's very good, but that means that sometimes you have to come on-site to fix the problem because you cannot remote in to fix it. Proven I T, we talked to them this year. They were, they came in and did an assessment. They gave us a fee that was much higher than everything else. They said we need a network engineer. They said, is there a new network engineer or a very skilled level-two technician? That we are two people short on my I T team for all the work that we had to do. They graded us an A though. Yay. But what they said that was the most memorable to me is that they had ten companies in line for a network engineer or a level-two technician. And how they work is if company A is first and company B says, I will give that network engineer ten thousand more dollars, company B wins that network engineer. And they were ten companies back from finding that individual because that need is so high outside, not just in K-12, right? Outside of K-12 as well. And so we cannot compete with someone coming in and saying, I'm just going to give you ten thousand more dollars, right? It just doesn't work like that. So we have shopped around. And as Dr. Case said, that in May, right, we're going to recommend continuing with Uber Tech. We have been a partnership. It has gotten that partnership and the work that myself and my team has done, they got us, we got us that A, right? Working really hard these past two years. And we would like to continue this partnership, that we can continue maintaining healthy systems and keep our, our technology safe and healthy.
And if anybody have questions, comments? I will say that when we were sent a link, and it was very involved, and kudos to the I T team. Thirty-nine minutes and twenty-six questions seconds. And if you have any questions after you watch that, I don't know what the heck is going on because it was very thorough. I think you did a good job of putting that together. And another thing that you brought up here in your presentation was HIPAA requirements. And so we're a small school corporation, but we have the same rules and regulations that we have to follow as does the larger school corporations. And so that makes a big difference. Because we're small, doesn't mean we have not followed the rules and regulations regarding I T. It's very complicated and I'm just glad I'm not in I T. That's why I'm human resources. Anybody have questions, comments?
I have a couple of questions. Can you explain to me the relationship where you had stated, and I believe this is also stated in the video, that Uber Tech fills in the gaps for our I T department? Can you, is there some sort of system that you have in place? Because, and I'm asking this for a specific reason. Some teachers had been, you know, very vocal about just certain things that have happened with technology and just some frustrations they've experienced when they put in the help, help us ticket. Some of them have indicated that the East Porter team has come out, you know, several times, and then they're trying to fix it, trying to fix it. And then, then they call Uber Tech, but this ends up with like delays. And, you know, the problem that they needed fixed within that, you know, shorter timeframe, it takes like, you know, possibly five, six months before it's fixed. So how does that look? And is there a system where you guys decide that you are going to go in and fill in those gaps?
Can I take that one? Sure. Okay. Yeah, so it's really important and it's a directive by me that my team tries to fix it. And I, I don't, if you give me a specific, like later on, you know, I can look up that and we can talk about the specific ticket. But there was actually several, so that's why I couldn't pinpoint it to one. But there, this has been just an ongoing, I believe it even came up during the listening tours as well. Yeah, so sometimes, you know, teachers put in a ticket and it's unclear what the issue is, right? So we go in trying to solve a particular issue and then, you know, we try to solve that. And if we can't, and we find out it's a network issue, then we, we pass it on to Uber Tech. We find out that it is a network issue. It actually just happened this morning with Mrs. Evans, right? She said, hey, my, something will connect. And it was with L A O. L A O is the financial system. It's run off of a server. So I sent my I T team over, actually, you came to them, but to fix it. And I said, well, they can update drivers. I kind of listed four or five things that they can do. But if that's not it, it's server-related and we have to call in Uber Tech to, to figure out why the server's not connecting. So it's not always that. But we try to solve tickets within a week or two max, unless it's something that is an extension. So we have a couple of tickets open right now that are, have to be done in the summer. There are things that are prepared, but we try to solve those things. As far as the skills go, if we, if I identify something that I think my team can handle, then we make some time outside of their, not outside of the day, but outside of their normal activities to set aside some time with the different engineers to work on those things with my team or myself, to work on the skills. So, you know, can we learn this thing and then apply it then independently ourselves later?
Okay, and back to, okay, so I'm glad you said that because I did notice, and you had even mentioned that you had some turnover in the I T department. I believe three to four I T employees had resigned this year. They haven't?
Nope.
Not this year. Last year, there were a couple technicians tried and they, they didn't work out very well and then.
Yeah. They all, they all left for either educational or career opportunities.
Either way, either way, but when we're talking about, you know, that component of training the staff and then like kind of just, like I just, you know, as a board member, just want to ask these questions to ensure that maybe we're not, you know, do we need to take that, take a different look at that training piece of it if we're having, you know, these roles where there's, you know, perhaps a higher turnover for whatever reason that may be? You know, is that something, you know, possibly could we streamline some of that? Maybe not use as much time into that training component? Because is it worth it, I guess, is the question? If we're going to have such a high turnover, like I said, regardless of the reasons?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's definitely different applications as to how much do you train versus how much do you actually do? In general, most of, especially with the new guy, he's done pretty well in picking up things. There are people that learn the first time you touch something. There's people that you need to show three or four times. And you have a pretty good guy now who's, after you show him the first time, he's going to get in the car and drive and you're going to keep an eye on him and make sure he's doing it right. But it, it's going to vary by personnel. It's also going to vary by issue. I think that's really the key piece of this, is the nuance of, okay, you have a teacher who has problem X, Y, Z. And sometimes X, Y, Z is very quick. You send your technician out, it's fixed in ten minutes. You get the exact same report a week later for a different teacher, student, whatever it may be. And the resolution could be five layers deep and they spend three or four hours on it and then they eventually call us in. You just, unfortunately, unless it is a very specific issue, like something doesn't turn on, it's, it's an obvious type thing. Okay, great, we need to pull it, replace it, figure out what's wrong with the other one, then use it as a spare. Those situations are very straightforward, but the ones that have a lot of nuance to them, those are the ones you have to approach them, approach that bridge and address that situation as you get to it. So are there times where you can? Definitely, there are times where, where it may be more applicable that we just, hey, let's get somebody out there side by side, show them how to do this because he's never done it. And we actually do that already. So Angela sees something, she knows to say, hey, Ryan, hey, guys, we're seeing this. I don't think we've run into this before. Can we get somebody out here? And they can work with Peyton and get this work through, and then Peyton knows how to fix it the next time.
And I think some issues take time just to analyze. So, you know, the school board approved the Wi-Fi upgrades. The Wi-Fi needs upgraded. It's ten years old. We had some Wi-Fi problems at Calhoun. Those were, we had to monitor it with the Ruckus company. And we were using the, you know, the Ruckus on, on the phone with Ruckus every day. Right? The, the network engineers were looking at the logs, seeing what, what it was, trying to figure it. But the big overarching issue is the wifi needs updated. And the wifi is getting updated this year, but it's not updated right now. Right? So there will still be intermittent issues until that, until the access points are replaced, until the controller is replaced, until the support is upgraded. So would that be potentially a recurring problem? In, in the building of Calz, it depended on what room you were in. And those teachers, you know, I talked to those teachers about, about those issues. And we, we tried to come up with solutions as fast as possible and hours, I would say, you know, Larry from Uber Tech is the one on that issue and he, for hours. And, you know, we were trying to brainstorm and pay, what is it? What is it? And, and found, identified eventually the reason, but it took a long time because with the company and with Larry, we had to look at those logs and you can only see what's happening by observing what's happening and assessing it.
Okay. And when you state that you have a variety of skill sets, so like different people that are trained in a variety of skill sets and things like that, I think that's really great. I've actually heard a lot of great things from the teachers from Uber Tech. I feel like, I don't feel, I mean, this is, you know, based on the data that I collected, excuse me, collected. The, the teachers are actually very happy with the service that they have received from Uber Tech. Unfortunately, it feels like, keeps saying it feels like, based on, you know, the conversation that I've had with teachers and how this relationship looks and things like that. You know, they, they feel like Uber Tech provides them with a great quality tech service. The one complaint that I have repeatedly heard is just that lag in response because it's like, you know, it's, it's our people at East Porter. And, and then one of the tech comes in, they fix it right away and then their, you know, their, their problem is solved. So I just, you know, that's why I ask questions about, you know, can we streamline that in any way? Or is there any process where it's like, okay, you know, or, or even, you know, do we need as many, does our tech staff at East Porter need to be as tech heavy if we have, we're, you know, continuing to partner with Uber Tech?
Well, and, uh, did you have more to say?
No.
I, I thought you were.
No, I was just throwing my throat. Yeah.
So I would say that East Porter is at the minimum they can be for the cost per repair that you're going to look at in a, in a school district. You guys have a help desk person, you have a hardware technician, you have, you have Angela in, in charge and, and running it and helping coordinate not only teachers, but the staff and us and all those software vendors and security vendors we have involved. So the only way that you're going to see that, there are ways we could potentially tweak little things in regards to how we communicate. But the only way you're going to get faster internal response is by adding hats. Because you're already at the minimum. And while what we do as an organization, we could, can take on things like help desk and hardware technician. The bottom line is that you guys have the need for a hundred percent capacity of what you already have. So bringing in an outsourced consultant who's going to charge you a markup on top of the salary costs and everything else that goes in is only going to take your costs up. And generally you don't have those onsite. So if you feel there's a gap in regards to how responsive the internal staff could be, the answer unfortunately, cost per repair, cost for the service level you're trying to get is to beef up your internal staff. Because the boots on the ground portion is the most cost effective way you can deal with day to day onsite. You need to have somebody who is endeavored in and knows the operational status. So when somebody says, teacher Smith at Washington, they know that's room 237. She had, she teaches fourth grade. She does this and that. She has this. Somebody who knows that. Because as an outsourced side, I mean, I don't, we don't mind helping in those situations, but we don't have somebody who lives and breathes East Porter County schools. We live and breathe computers and switches and routers and firewalls and security. And, and that, that makes for a good, quick repair. Because we know what, the, the advantage you have with outsourcing is that you have, we have a lot of different tools in our toolbox. So I have 16 engineers slash technicians that provide various services to our clients. So when we hear that you have an issue with your wireless access point system or your specific firewall. We know, hey, we need to grab one of these three or four guys that have this specific skill set that can quickly assist and move that through. But that comes at a premium. So to do so where you are either adding more time for us so that we, we are touching more of your tickets. Or to internalize that would be you need a second hardware tech or you need a larger contract with us. It's going to allow us to engage more. And, and a quicker handoff if that was going to happen. Does that make sense?
Sort of. I just, and, and I heard, I heard this today and then I also heard it in the video that we were shown that it was, you know, the, the rate is approximately $15,000 per month at a $250,000 a year contract. And that whether or not we use you more or less, it's still going to be pretty much the same with that.
It's a, it's a fixed price agreement in regards to, we give you a rate for the annual. But the way we treat it, like I said, it's a partnership agreement. So when we get to, example, Dr. K's mentioned doing the three-year version. When we get to the end of that, we get two and a half years into this and we start talking about renewal, we're going to look at that, what you've used, re-aggregate what it is and then give you a new price. So if you start handing off more tickets while we are under agreement to facilitate those, when you get to the next contract, if you're, if you're pushing those numbers higher and higher, you're going to end up with a higher contract rate. So we're trying to keep your cost per repair, your cost per issue, your cost for management to the optimal and minimal level, but still having a high level of service.
Okay, got you. And an additional question I have is that when you do provide the training, are you providing them the credentials to keep with them? So like, for example, if your training is fine on how to do something, you know, software, you know, technician, any of those types of things. Is that then adding on to, you know, her credentials?
No, not that. It's not a classroom level training. It's, it's a hands-on, applicable training. Here's how you apply Windows Update 11HG. Here's the process you go through in adjusting Windows credentials. And here's the three methods you can use to, to get to those pieces. It's not, you were going, getting you certified in working on this particular product. It's not a certification methodology. It's how do I get things done? It's operational training.
And I'd like to add, we have taken, I have taken advantage of the state's free training through UDEM. My team has not had any time to do it yet, but we're signed up. So we get free trainings in there and then I can assign them as, and that has been something that I've said, you know, next year, this is going to be mandatory, even for myself. And to choose things that are on the network side. Skills we can pick up through that free training. And some of those do equal credentials, but that is free. It doesn't cost the district any money. Doesn't cost anybody any money. It's something that I applied for from the state. They provided from the IOT. And we, we receive them and now we can get training for free in that way as well.
I think that, you know, as a, as a board member and, you know, I just, you know, I hear a lot of different things from different teachers and things like that. And, you know, just getting that feedback about what, what exactly, you know, during the listening tours, what exactly is it about tech that they are frustrated with? And, you know, and so I just, and, you know, I, please don't feel like I'm, I'm picking on you. This is not, and, you know, I just, I wouldn't serve us better if we had somebody with the tech credentials in staff to be able to determine whether or not this rises to the level of let's bring in Uber Tech. Or are we going to try to solve it five times without their credentials and then bring in Uber Tech? Because it's really causing an issue with time and classroom and, you know, the needs of the classroom when they're not getting those tickets.
I would ask, please send me the tickets that you're specifically talking about and then we can look at that to, to go through. Cause with all due respect, Mrs. Biden has done a phenomenal job in looking at when we put the position into place, we had conversation and because you can go one of two ways. You can either get somebody extremely technical, which doesn't understand the instructional component, or you can go with somebody with an instructional component and then hire the backup for the technical. And so with the, for the referral to, if there are multiple things that are taking six to eight months, I would love to, to know what those are specifically so that we can address that. Because I don't want things to take too long to get that because we want a pretty quick turnover. But I personally am not aware of anything that's gone on that long. And I know our help desk tickets are in a much better place because one of the things I check in frequently, how many desk, help desk tickets do we have? Because there was at one time when, when I first started looking at that, there were almost 80 to 100 help desk tickets.
If you'd like to get a little more specific, if you'd like to know the one that took the five to six months.
Why don't you share that with Dr. K? Please tell that to me. Because we're, we're talking right now about Uber Tech renewal and the information regarding to that.
I'm still on that topic though.
I think you, I would encourage you to send that information to Dr. Kase. Dr. Kase.
And there are processes in regards to what, the, the way we engage and work, work together. So if we can get a lit, hey, great. You've got, you mentioned there are multiple, right? There's six or seven tickets. Then we can go backtrack and audit those tickets within their system. And figure out where did the process fail? Let's improve this. Great. Where we need to hand, what is, is it a matter of it needed to be handed off sooner? Did it get lost in the cracks? Did it get lost in the old system? Because one of the things that happened in the last two years and as somebody who deals with about three or 4,000 users of support, the, the memory of end users doesn't usually match the actual audits. Many times we'll have, we'll hear things like, oh, oh, it's so horrible. I put in this and it still hasn't been resolved. And we go back and that ticket was put in three years ago. They've been contacted four times. Got closed out two years ago and they're still complaining about that ticket from multiple years ago. Where they didn't get back to tech support. We have copies of the records. We can go in the email system and see they, they saw the email. And so there can be a finger pointing game. So we try and avoid that. So if we can say, great, we have an instance where something failed. Things are going to happen, especially, I mean, I have a 25 man team at our office. I see human failure all the time because we have a lot of moving parts and we support a number of accounts. So we have to be very process heavy. So same thing on this side. If there are things we can do to help that process internally, we, but we need specific instances, no different than the troubleshooting mentioned earlier with the wireless system. We need to be able to go into the logs, find the access point that's having an issue, pull the logs from that, extract and figure out where the actual issue is so that we can resolve it. So we need very specific pieces to try and fix a very technical process. It wouldn't be helpful.
Yeah. It's easy to solve a, a problem that has a very specific reason it's failing. It's very difficult to solve a problem like that. We find that we didn't know why it was failing. That's, that's a much more of an investigation.
But happy to work with you on that, Dr. K. So if you get that, we'll, we'll put our heads together and figure out why, why those things slip through the cracks, whatever maybe.
Thank you for the presentation. Yes, I have items, CI, discussion item to be ready and guard 911. Currently our district in the seven districts, all seven of us in Porter County are using Guard. Oh, I'm sorry. I found out the portage is already switched to Raven. But the, the, yeah, no, it was a surprise solace. So our current security app is called Guard 911. And the, the purpose of it is if there are any issues like an active assailant or something that's taking place in the school, a teacher simply pulls up their phone, hits the Guard 911 app. And it automatically alerts any law enforcement person in the area that there is an active assailant. And it enrolls them to the school and it will give a GPS location point in the vicinity of where that alert took off. And it is utilized to help reduce response time. It doesn't go through 911. It will also contact 911. So it gets sent out through this badge. But any law enforcement individual who has hero 911 on their phone gets an instant notification. So there has been some conversation in the county and in the surrounding areas that they're, they are looking to change from Guard 911 to a panic button that is put on by a company called Rave. It does similar. The rave app is, has some better interactive components for notification of staff. Because currently if you do not have Guard 911 on your phone, you don't necessarily get the alert. And so with Guard 911 and Rave both, they are only effective to an individual who has downloaded the app onto their phone. And being that the school does not provide the phone, we cannot mandate, we can heavily encourage and strongly suggest and let our people know of the benefits of having that app on their phone, but we cannot force them to put it on the phone. So with the advantage that Rave has is the teacher doesn't have to have the app on their phone. We can push notifications through the app to alert them if something's gone through. The biggest difference between Guard 911 and Rave is the law enforcement notification. With Guard 911, anybody who has a hero automatically gets tossed. It doesn't matter if they're from Florida. It doesn't matter if they're from Valparaiso, La Porte County, Lake County, Jasper County. I had had an incident where I have experienced when the Guard 911 app goes off in a previous district. And the law enforcement response was phenomenal. And I'm talking, it was instantaneous. From a standpoint, I think it was less than two minutes and we had first law enforcement at the building. And in doing so, it bypassed 911. It just went directly out. I know that we have law enforcement from Lake County respond, law enforcement from Porter County, because they happened to be in Jasper County at the time. And Lake County even sent a helicopter over that way because everybody was alerted to that. With Rave, the challenge is this, only law enforcement that we upload get that notification. Now granted, we will have all of Porter County. We can reach out to Jasper and La Porte to get their, that information to be uploaded. But the sheriff's department will be working with the FBI, CIA, and all the people that live in our area that are affiliated with federal law enforcement and such. And they will, we're also working with Valpo PD, Calz PD, Chesterton PD. And all of the law enforcement agencies in Porter County to get their numbers uploaded. I do have a little bit of concern because I guess the biggest question that we have is what is the purpose and intention of the app? I personally look at it as I want the fastest notification to get law enforcement into the building. Obviously we are fortunate enough that we have an SRO in every single building. How fast can we get backup to them? How fast can we get through there? All six schools, all the other six schools have already committed to bringing Rave in. Simply because there are advantages on the staffing component on the notification of a teacher. And we are getting ready to look at our reunification drill. And I will tell you, a huge advantage to that is a teacher can go through there. They can, say, and there's checklist and I apologize for the video not working for you. I've contacted Brandon to lift that up so that you guys can do that. There are some components to it. When it comes to safety, we don't want people to see the protocols on that because then it gives advantages to those people that may come in. So you will have access to that before we meet. Unfortunately, he's been sick and so he wasn't able to respond to me today after I found out that your videos didn't work. So thank you for letting me know. The, but in doing that, let's say there is a part of our assailant drill is, you know, it's either run, hide or fight. And so if we have teachers and students that are leaving campus and she, we have a teacher that takes a group of kids off. She can say, I have all my kids. And what it does is it gives us a, a pin of where they are located. And I also get a green check mark. So as the teachers check in, we can know exactly where they are, who might need assistance or anything along those lines. Because now you can communicate in a time where you really don't have any way to communicate. It also works in with wifi. So even if they don't have a cell signal, because one of my concerns is we all know that Morgan Township, we have the cell phone, will not work in Morgan Township. It doesn't matter. We, we've changed, made some adjustments. It doesn't matter, we, we've changed, made some adjustments to the, um, the gymnasium, trying to boost that up so that during events, but still if you're anywhere else in the building, it just does not work. The, so as we're going through, there are some benefits to it that could help us in that time. Now, I also think that it's important to work in collaboration with the other districts. So my recommendation, uh, will be for the district to move to Rave. But I do want to be fully transparent that my biggest concern, because you don't know who's gonna be there. And it might save a few seconds to get somebody faster if we had Guard nine one one. And, um, I know we have Officer Nap in the room. And he and I have had multiple conversations because we're of a very similar mind when, when it comes to it. Um, but the other components, it, it all goes back to what is the single function that you're looking for it? Or what are the advantages? Uh, so there are some advantages of going to Rave, uh, in regards to, um, the pricing is actually cheaper. The interface is better, uh, it looks, um, so that that is a huge, the communication with faculty is better. Uh, and as long as we have the right people loaded up, uh, for push notifications, even for law enforcement, they will get it before it goes to nine one one, because as we saw, um, I believe it was Cindy Hook, by the time all the process got through nine one one, the, uh, response was a little delayed because it takes a while to get through all of that. Now, with that being stated, uh, Rave is also connecting, um, with our emergency nine one one status because they have just, uh, signed on with, uh, Motorola and Connect. And so Rave is owned by Motorola, and so they will have a direct connect right to that. So they will get the, uh, notification even before nine one one gets called. So that they can, um, see where the interface is, like if there's a pin and it goes off, then they can send law enforcement directly, uh, to that location of where the, uh, system was set up. The geo fencing also is a little bit better with Rave than it is with, uh, Guard nine one one. Uh, for example, here at Couts, uh, the central office will be encompassed inside of the geo fence. Uh, Washington Township, that entire campus will be there. So that if anything's taking place in the elementary, the high school will also be alerted. So there, I know it's a lot of information and I'm sorry that your link didn't go. Uh, it's like about a ten minute video that just goes over and shows you a little bit of what the interface is. Any big questions, comments?
These two contracts for Guard nine one one, um, it says total amount due, but it doesn't state, it doesn't break it down the way that your Rave contract does. The Rave has the cost per year and then the total cost of the contract. But the comparable contract that you provided with us does not seem to compare, it doesn't, um, uh, delineate, you know, the cost, like what the cost is on each of these, if that makes sense. Like there's not a cost on here that I see that's per year. So what is the four thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars for Guard nine one one?
That's what the invoice is for the year, that's the price per year.
Okay, so that would be, but you had it broken down the way that Rave, is there a view that we could see it so that we can compare them side by side? Because otherwise this would require to do math for each month. Like, do we have something where it says total cost per year, total cost for, for contract? Um, do we have Guard nine one one's original, um, contract with us?
I will have to look that up. When I'm, when you're looking at it, the, uh, total due is, because basically they're charging us, um, eleven hundred and eighty-eight dollars per geo fence, because they do each of the, um, buildings separate. So here it is four, where is Garden, or, um, Rave is only three geo fences. And that's why I was talking about the difference between Rave and, uh, Guard nine one one when it comes to geo fences. So they have a geo fence around the elementary school and a geo fence around the high school, Guard nine one one does, where Rave has one geo fence over the entire campus.
Can you explain to me what, I apologize, but this is, and, you know, in your question, but what, can you explain to me what a geo fence is?
Sure, a geo fence is a, an area that is encompassed. So in order for the app to work, it has to be within a set area. So they will draw a tech, a technological fence around the perimeter of the building. So, uh, or the can, the, the canvas. So that if that app is activated during, in that area, it will go off. So if you are outside of that area and, uh, your kid actually gets a hold of your phone and then, um, sets it off, it will not trigger the alarm. So, and they call it, uh, basically, you can kind of consider it like a, uh, underground fence that we do for our pets, so they can't go outside of that area. And so it's just, we will work with them to create how big of an area we want that to be, and that is called a geo fence.
And Rave offers that and Guard nine one one is different because they do not have that same setup?
They have a geo fence, they're, yeah, but. Yeah.
What's the difference there between?
So they have each, they have a geo fence around each building, where Rave's would be about around each campus. So we would have one less, which is a cost savings, because every time you add a geo fence, it adds money.
My question I had was, when I look at the, um, Rave contract, it seems a sixty-month contract, um, and then a subscription. So if we wanted to do a twelve-month subscription to try it out or be ready to change at the end, is there a different pricing for that? Or they only give us?
My guess is they wouldn't, uh, give us a different ones, just to see, uh, I don't think there would be a pricing difference. The only problem is, is if we go back to them next year, uh, we might have to pay more because we would not be locking in what their current fee is. But that is definitely something we can ask them to do if we wanted to do a twelve-month trial.
One question. Would it be possible for you to make us like a pros and cons list between the two of them prior to us voting on this? Just because I, I understand that, you know, you've taken the time to verbally let us know all these things, but just so that we're clear on information, what we're comparing and cost comparison, things like that. Like, you know, obviously we want to make sure that we're making a safe and sound choice for our students. And, um, I just, I, I guess I've just, I just want to make sure that all that is side by side so that we see, you know, what they offer in comparison to, to, you know, to each other.
Are you asking for more than what I gave you in our, um, your board packet? There is a.
I didn't see, but that's not to say that there's not one in here.
Yeah, it's in the notes. Basically, Rave is more friendly, uh, user-friendly, better communication-based, pushing out notifications, better geo fencing, more cost effective. Basically, it was designed for the beneficial of staff, uh, calls nine one one and alerts, uh, law enforcement that are uploaded and do have the app notification affiliated with campus.
It's on the agenda part of your.
Correct.
Word docs under the executive content. So it's in word docs?
It should be, but it's also, it should be printed out packet.
I don't see that, but, um, I will.
We'll make sure that it's in the, um, the regular one too, so that way you have the same information.
Thank you.
See you back.
I have a question, and it can be something you think about, but, uh, my question is, um, negatives, if we stick with Guard nine one one, will it affect, are there any negative consequences that you guys can think of if we don't do what everyone else in Florida is doing? Or more of a common, so bigger schools and everyone else have gone to Rave, and we say it, Guard nine one one, is there a negative? Um, you know, will less officers have the app? Will, will there be, you know, if it's not as well-used, but do other schools out of our district use it? Still Guard nine one one, sorry, the Guard nine one one.
Sure, the, the biggest downfall or the downside that I would see to this is being that the other schools are, are going to be doing it. Porter County Sheriff's Department told me that they will make sure that their law enforcement uploads the app because it's important to the sheriff to make sure that that happens. I can't get the same guarantee from the other local fire departments because the schools that they service on a regular basis are going to Rave. So yes, we would have that for the Sheriff's Department and probably Couts. But that is only the, um, local and not necessarily guaranteed for the other ones because we're not publicizing it as much as we were, because we would be the only school to do it. Bill, if you know anything different, please.
Uh, no, I, I would agree, uh, uh, concern is that once the other districts switch over, uh, and I, I can't speak for any other department, it's just the concern that they would no longer promote Guard nine one one. Uh, that it would, they would just promote Rave to their officers. And then, like, I'll have both apps because it's important that if there's an issue imported and I'm just up the road at, at Meyer there, I should respond, right? Whether they have Rave or, or, uh, School Guard. Um, the, the worry is, and like I said, I can't speak for our departments, that they will not have the same philosophy. They wouldn't push, uh, School Guard as much as they would Rave. And then can't guarantee, we have several, uh, different officers live throughout the county. Go to Portage, they go to Couts, you know, Morgan. Um, if they don't know something's going on right in front of the school because they don't have that, the, the app, it's a, you know, obviously a concern.
Last question, is there beside these two companies are, sorry, less than three, um, less, besides these two companies, are there other throughout the state? So like.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so there's many that do that.
There, there are other ones that, I don't know if there's many, but I do know there are, um, I'm trying to think, I know at least one, I don't remember what the name was. But, so there are different companies that are trying to do some, like, they even have some companies now that have panic buttons that you can put around your neck and hit that.
Next item is two C.
Yes, and project.
Yeah, project process.
So what I am looking for the board is just discussion on, um, how to proceed. Uh, not looking, obviously, again, for any answers, but just to get temperatures on, uh, bonding. In the years past, we have been issuing some geo bonds in order to help offset some of our operating expenses, uh, which allows us not to transfer as much from the educational fund as to the operation, because we've been trying to reuse that, uh, transfer amount. And so as we go through and looking at that, you know, we've got some challenges, um, before us. Uh, and I've shared what our kindergarten enrollment, current enrollment is. We know that we're gonna get a few more, we do every year, but it's not going to, uh, make up near the difference of what we're graduating out in comparison to what we have. So last year, we had a significant, um, decrease coming into kindergarten in comparison to what we graduated. This year, we, we're anticipating another significant decrease in doing that. So as we're looking at what that enrollment is going to be, I, I encourage you all to be thinking about how are we going to be, uh, looking at classes and looking at building structure? Are we utilizing our facilities? You know, I, I know that during your listing tours and board members have concerns about class sizes. I am going to tell you, it is difficult to manage class sizes when you're talking twenty-five or twenty-six kids in a particular entire grade. It is easier when you have multiple sections to keep those classes. If you've got four or five sections, it's easier to distribute kids into classes to keep the class sizes lower. When you have one to two sections, it becomes very difficult. And so as, as we move forward, you know, the other part, if you look at Senate Bill one, which, um, putting some things together for you now that the legislation is finished, we're trying to interpret, what does this mean? How is this, uh, coming into play? Uh, what I can tell you is, and I know there was a question, even if we were to look at, uh, virtual school, eighty-five percent. So they got rid of the seventy and they kept it at eighty-five percent. And, and so as we, um, look at that and we start planning for what we want to do next, we have seen a tremendous increase in our utilities and our expenses. We're talking like twenty percent. So as we are starting to look at the bonding, you know, I, um, asked the board, do you want me to look at, or us to look at like a four or five million dollar geo bond? Or do we do something larger so that we can start doing that? Um, I know that there's been, um, some concerns in regards to solar. But if we look at solar, that is something that we can control. We can control a little bit, um, about the usage of electricity. So that we're not having to pay NIPs go as much. Uh, I have done some research and, uh, we'll be sending you, because I even reached out to three schools in Porter County that have had it solar, uh, to say, has it been worth it? The responses that I, one of them was like, tell me, sorry. The responses that I got too said, yes, we would, because had we not, um, the increases have eaten up all of our savings. And so as we're looking for, but if they didn't have it, then they would, they would be paying even more than what they had for the savings. Now, they also did tell me that they utilized most of it, uh, February, was it January? February, January and February, they don't see too much of a return on it because there's not much sun in those particular part, but the other months, uh, they can go through and look at it. We also know, just using a little bit of common sense, where we're gonna see the best sun is probably when we're not even in school. We got June, July, and first part of August. However, the other part that we would look at, um, you know, with the, we don't necessarily always use air conditioning in the summer, uh, because we're trying to save on our utility costs, which has created some humidity issues inside of our buildings, which we've had to toss out Chromebooks and, uh, Chromebook cases because they were left in a closet that was closed up and the humidity and, uh, grew, grew some, uh, uh, bacteria and stuff on it. So as we go through, um, you know, we are looking at some, a, a larger bond and working with Mr. Kenworthy, who has talked to solar people, roof people, and some HVAC. Uh, they're looking at nineteen million dollars to, because in order to put solar on, uh, we gotta redo the, all the roofs. Uh, because it would be crazy, even though we might have five to ten years out on a couple of our roofs. Uh, and it's not worth the added expense to put the solar on, to remove it in five years, to redo the roof, to put it back on. Now, we're talking about, uh, labor intensive, which will cost us more. It's actually cheaper for us to do the roofs now than to wait for those. A lot of things to think about, but it is. Or if we don't want to do all the roofs, if possible, is to put the solar on, on the ground in the areas that we have space for that, but we really don't have space at, uh, Morgan. And so when we initially looked at, um, solar, we were talking about ground at Washington and, um, Couts, because we have the space for it, and Morgan Township, we're looking at putting it on the roof, because we don't have the space for it.
Are you looking to do, um, one bond? And then, I know what, what you've been doing, or what we've been doing as a, as a corporation, is like offsetting the years that we do projects. So if you did one roof, one solar at one campus, and then the next year, do one roof, one solar with the same bond? Or, or is that not how that works? Are we looking to take one bond, because all roofs, do all solar? Sorry, just to understand what we're looking to do.
So when, when you found out, you've got, was it three to five years? I know it's a minimum of three years. Three years, uh, to spend that money out before you start having to worry about having, uh, making too much money off interest and then creating some other issues. Because the State Board of Council or the LTF does not take kindly to finding money out simply so that you can, um, invest it and make interest payments on it. So you have to spend it out. So if we were looking at, because here's, here's the other question that I have. And, and this is where I am getting into a predicament and a quander. Is, let's say the board approves to do twenty million dollars and we put solar and we put roofs and we do the HVAC in our three campuses and we continue to see a decline in our enrollment. Yeah.
I have a question, has there, has there been any other, um, avenues that you have looked at to decrease, um, transferring the education, um, funds to the operations funds? Because I understand that we transfer two hundred, about two hundred thousand dollars per month from education to operations currently right now, which I know that you have staged it as around eight percent. Basically transfer more, um, but have you looked at any other ways where we can cut costs so that we, you know, you know, in the time being? Um, we've lost how many students last year? Was it about fifty students last year? Which means that eighty on one out, okay, so right now we're looking at losing an additional eighty on top of that fifty, or is that just?
Probably, I'm estimating it'll probably be about another fifty or fifty five.
Okay, so with the declining enrollment, have we looked at, um, you know, we've, I know that last year there were some teacher positions that were not refilled. Um, I know at Washington Township in particular, the class sizes are, are very large, especially in comparison to the other two campuses. Um, have we looked at, you know, adjusting our central office staff, for example, um, to, I understand that when we hired some of these positions, um, and reviewing, um, past notes and, and board docs when I, when I was sworn in, it looks like there was a higher need then, and that need is no longer, you know, with the declining enrollment, less students. Has that been accounted for? Because these, these central office positions come with some fringe benefits, including dollar health insurance. So they're not just a salary at that point, they're also, you know, it's an entire salary package. Um, have, have we thought about that at all?
Almost definitely. So we've eliminated a food service director, which misses.
So we contract that out now?
Uh, part of it, but Mrs. Niemba is the one that oversees it. So that was a significant savings.
Salary of fifty some thousand plus thirty some thousand for insurance down to twenty five thousand dollars.
Uh, we no longer have a curriculum director. So we have.
Well, you have an assistant superintendent that does the curriculum.
We also, at one time we had both an assistant superintendent and a curriculum director.
Yeah, not very normal.
Career.
Yeah.
And then we've also, um, reduced even with technology because we are not, sorry, Mrs. Bynum, but we are not paying Mrs. Bynum while he paid our technology directors because they have like a skill set.
Right, the skill set, but I mean, in listening to the presentation, the tech staff at Tri Township, St. Paul, um, PZS, their tech staff is a much smaller team and, um, it was stated before that, you know, they have, that East Porter has a pretty, um, significant size in comparison to just those three schools that were named in the presentation, for example. So, um, just, you know, just throwing that out there, have we looked at, um, you know, instead of the teachers being cut or these positions not being refilled, which is what, how that has been handled in the past, have we looked at any other avenues of where we can kind of cut things from, from other areas? Especially when we have a good, a good contract, it sounds like in our needs are not with Cooper Tech, do we need all of these other positions and, you know, has that taken, taken into consideration?
And, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I. I think my understanding of that, that would be that if we cut our technology department, my, my, just my own understanding, we cut more for our technology department, we're going to become more reliant on Cooper Tech and our contracts going to increase. So we will be paying more.
But that would be the question, how much more?
What, uh, our contracts come down the last two years?
Right, but I think, I, I think that would be helpful information to know is how much more.
Sixty to eighty percent, I would say, of whatever we're replacing. So if you outsource it, hopefully it's appropriate for me to answer that question. Generally, when you outsource something, you, what you do is you elevate the, the expertise at a, at a reasonable differential that is cost. So if you have somebody internally that you are paying, we'll say you have a technician that's making forty thousand dollars and then you have your package on top of that, that you're paying him whatever, fifty five or sixty that you're paying out of pocket. You're probably going to pay between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars to outsource that position. You're going to increase this, probably the skill set that you're receiving, but you're also going to increase your cost by at a, approximately a similar ratio.
All right, but right now we have six tech staff, one which gets, you know, a pretty hefty.
Three.
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 Well, three or four.
It says.
They do some like basic.
Okay, but I'm just saying, but there, are those receiving the training as well?
No.
No, no, we do specifically.
And it says there's six people there.
Those are the billing techs, but they're typically more billing aides.
Right, but okay, so.
Yeah, we, we don't ever work with like the, the aides that do your guys' day to day and Chromebook stuff. That's not within our.
Right, and I'm not saying that there is not a, I mean, those six, you know, those three that are in at each campus, um, but, you know, do we need, you know, would it be more cost effective for us to have, you know?
Off the cuff, I would say whatever you, you take out at this point, because you guys have kind of went to the optimal level of my, I'm going to balance, uh, my boots on the ground versus what I'm going to outsource. If you outsource more, you're, you're going to see whatever cost you're spending today go up by probably seventy five percent on average. So if you're spending fifty grand right now to have somebody internal for, for somebody like us, even though we're in the community and we're doing this for you at a significant discount because of your proximity to us and the fact our kids go to school here and all those kinds of things, you're probably still going to, normally I would say double it, if you're spending fifty, you're probably a hundred. But with the discounts that we give you guys, it would probably be closer to seventy five percent. But still, you'd go from fifty or sixty grand that you're paying a, a patron or a internal person or whatever that rate is, if we were to take that over, you would see your costs go up nearly double, like I said, seventy five percent above what you're paying now.
And I think the corporation does look, takes things seriously, reviews what the cost is. And we are working, and we are working on a proposal to also help with, and I know the, um, you brought up a couple of different times tonight, the insurance. So we, we are working on a proposal to help save some money with administrative insurance systems. So the next discussion item is board docs, community and no digital platform. So I have been working on, as I've been asked to look at Neola and, uh, board docs. So our renewal for board docs is scheduled, uh, to be June thirtieth. Board docs is owned by a company called Diligent and they are looking at updating and upgrading their, uh, their platform to a, and it's called Community. Now, they have told us that eventually board docs will not be, uh, supported. So they're, um, one of the questions that I have is, um, do we want to hold off and continue to use board docs as long as we can? Because they haven't given us any date, like in two years or that's not going to be supported. Uh, in my conversations of Neola, uh, and just as a re, a quick update, uh, to transfer our, all of our policies over to Neola, it's a twenty eight thousand dollar one time fee. And then it's approximately thirty five hundred dollars a year after that. Um, but I would be sitting with the Neola person to go over and, uh, make sure that the, their policies are similar to what we have currently, and then they also have a slew of, uh, different other policies that, uh, we don't have.
So we got two different, talking about renewal for board docs, Neola doesn't do that.
But, but they. They, yeah, and, and that's where it comes because, and the reason that I bring up the Neola, currently, uh, board docs has not found, been able to uh, link Neola to their new community platform. And so when I talked with a Neola, um, representative, the, um, he told me that their conversation with board docs is it's going to be allowed before they transition and also we choose to stay with board docs for this. And then the other question that I have being that we've got, uh, three new school board members, do we even want to maintain a digital platform? Or do we just go paper pencil?
In board doc, what I found is if I'm searching for something, just do a search and it pulls up everything that's happened. And if I just have paper pencils, I have a pen, stack of papers or a new in the file can, it's hard to locate. I don't know if there's an alternative to board docs, but I just think it's a good, that type of platform is, is good. Give me some people have different opinions, but. The, uh, the only is, that's a great thing, but twenty eight thousand bucks, that's a lot of, it's just a lot of, a lot of change to make the change.
Well, my question is how much change? Because right now, and, and, you know, just from being sworn in in January, I've, you know, been looking a lot at our policies and just analyzing things and just, you know, certain policies that definitely look like they need to be, you know, there's just, um, you know, some, some issues that I see with them from a legal standpoint, and we had a community member today bring up some, a policy that we're about to vote on at the next board meeting. And, um, so when we're looking at merging what we have with the other, with the Neola, um, program, what would that look like? Would we be keeping some of our old policies or just wiping them out, or would it be safer just to wipe them all out from a legal standpoint? Because Neola, from what I understand, is used by over a hundred school districts in our, in Indiana, I believe you stated.
It is the most, uh, most commonly used. Basically, uh, we would be replacing most of what we have with Neola.
Right, okay, so that's why it was, would it be cheaper for us to just wipe out our policies and put in Neola and just go from standard to vote on them?
So have to go through our existing policy individually?
And even with the, um, policy, uh, change to Neola, there are some things that would, and by, what I meant, um, Mrs. Barasak, by going through is I would be looking at what version of their Neola policy best aligns to the vision of what our board has in their current policies.
You would be looking at that and would be voting on it on each one, several possible policies and.
We're talking books like this much policy and administrative guideline, while the administrative guidelines are just going to be, uh, transferring and interpreting what your policy is. Um, but yes, and I'm, it's going to take days and weeks of sitting and reading through every single policy.
And just to clarify our policy, what we do at the moment is review them all together in a work session. And we still go over each individual policy individually with board members to then, your suggestion, come up with the best versions, then vote on it.
If we are going through the, um, the whole, doing the whole sledge, it probably would not be that particular way because it would take us years to get through all of those. I would probably be bringing you chunks at a time. So it's not necessarily, uh, we would do a first reading, uh, where I would just talk about what the highlights are of those particular ones. But to labor through those, but it would, yeah, it would take years.
But, but they, uh, they would back up what they, what they have.
Correct.
Legally, they help us comply.
Correct.
Would we be altering anything that Neola says? So like, and, and my, I have two parts to that question, would we be altering, um, what their legal team has deemed as an appropriate policy? And then the second part to that, do they back it up if we alter it?
So you can go through and make alterations to that, um, but what we would, so when we have something, if we're looking at alter it, I would be working with their, uh, representative, who then would be taking it back to their legal team to ensure that it's, um, okay to do that. But if it is not been approved by them and the board decides to alter it, they may, they may not back that figure up because that's not what they, they put out in front of you.
Okay, and that would be, that would be my biggest thing with, you know, us merging, um, you know, she, switching over to the system, spending twenty eight thousand dollars and switching over to the system, um, that, you know, we would be doing, um, you know, that we would be also with that cost, just sort of, you know, um, all being in agreement that, you know, we cannot be altering these policies that aren't going to be legally defensible. It seems like in the future, we're going to be altering them.
My experience, they come with choices.
Okay.
So you.
Like a may or a shall.
Right. There'll be chunks of it that you can't do anything with, and then there'll be like three choices.
Correct.
And then you can pick the one that legally is sound but works.
That, and that's what I, yes, as I'm going through and looking at that, and by looking at the intent of the board, I would be making the selection that most aligns to what the board already voted in.
Because right now, um, at the next, um, the next business meeting session, the next public session where we will be voting, um, there's five, I believe, five policies on there. Okay, so would we be looking to mix those and put Neola in place, or are we still wanting?
If the board goes to Neola, eventually, yes.
Eventually, yes. Okay.
Because I can't.
No, I know we can't vote on it today, I'm asking.
Because I can't give you a Neola policy because they are copyrighted.
Okay, but what I'm asking is, at the next board meeting, would those policies still be on, the ones that we were planning on voting on for second reading? Or was it third, second or third reading? Would we be just, those would no longer be on the agenda, we would have Neola on there to decide at that point? Or you said it's eventually?
So I would still ask the board to approve the current policies as they are, simply so that we can move forward because it has to do with the way that we are giving information to the public. Uh, we give us the, um, current, uh, direction on when, uh, we make the board agendas. Um, even with the law enforcement, I know Mr. Col Branson, um, had made mention, um, I will have to you the opinion of our school attorneys and ISBI, uh, which may be different than what Mr. Col Branson, um, had spoke. But he brings up a good point for you to consider on that part, but your attorneys, um, they, they don't, um, they see it differently. Um, on that because the only thing that we are allowing people, um, officers to do is we are not allowing them to inter, interrogate. Uh, they are just interviewing. Uh, there's a difference between interviewing and interrogating. And so, um, but at the same time, to answer the question, yes, we would still be doing that because it's going to take us some time to get to the point where I can bring you new policies.
Okay, well, I have a question, so we shouldn't even consider Neola until we know if it's going to be compatible then with the update of board docs? Because.
Oh, it is compatible with board docs, it's just the community, community.
But eventually it's going to be community, so.
They're, they're working on that, they, they've got, they have contracts, it has to be.
Well, and then the other thing I was, I was, you know, it's too bad that Bob isn't here so that we could hear his opinion on this, but I feel that if we're going to vote on continuing to do digital board docs, then we should, that should include all members so that we don't have half of the members getting paper copies. I think that's wasteful. That, that was I hear.
I, I like having the paper copies, I'd like to be able to write on them, um, board docs can, is all, you know, it can be very glitchy. And, um, I think that, um, I'm not sure why we would want to not allow board members to be able to have packets of information where we can take notes and ask, um, you know, good questions. I think that Bob actually was, um, you know, and, and, you know, I don't have a printer at home. Um, the board members that are able to print items off at home seem to be more at an advantage when they come to meetings and I'm trying to get board docs to work so that I can look at all the information. Having a packet given to me, as Bob has gotten in the past, has been really helpful to me to stay prepared as a board member. So I would prefer, even if we go digital, that we continue to have the paper copies provided to us.
I think it's a lot to ask the central office to print off all of the board docs copies and then also deliver them to board members' houses.
Well, Bob has been getting them delivered for quite some time now and he lives a mile from me, so I don't think that's something.
Right, we need to make that change though, I would say.
That would be something for a discussion, uh.
I think so too, I think it's just going to happen.
That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's good presentations and, and, you know, good, good discussions and sure we're going to win more from the region, one ISBA. Be prepared, so thanks for being here tonight. I will, uh, adjourn the meeting.
Happy birthday, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Go home and enjoy.